Good evening Vacaville. This is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting for October 28, 2025. It's 6:05 PM. May I have a real call?
Council Agency Authority Member Stockton.
Here.
Richie.
Here.
Silva.
Fremount.
Wiley.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Chapman.
Here.
Mayor Chair Carley.
Here. If you're able, please stand with me for a moment of silence. Vice Mayor Chapman, will you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we just came from closed session and there were three items. We completed item A. There's nothing to report out. We will conclude the open session today going into closed session in conclusion for items B and C. And with that, do we have any changes to our agenda at all?
Yes, just one change. Item 9E is more of an informational item. There's no action to be taken and we will be bringing back to council the presentation at a future date.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and Wiley seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
So reports of the City Council. I'll begin simply by saying that I had shared at the last council meeting that there would be an STA discussion on the Soltrans routes. I can, I can at least inform the council that that meeting did occur and the conclusion of that, I'll just keep it simple, is it got very well debated and what that means is then you create a subcommittee to try and solve the problem. And this has to do with the lines that run through Vacaville, through Dixon and up to Davis. And so those subcommittee meetings will be agendized at STA in November and December and hopefully there'll be a report out on that. And then the other item I wanted to share is, well, two things. One is the mayor's committee met and in that particular discussion, we agendized an issue that's been facing not only our city but several cities and that is the tax sharing agreement between all the cities and the county and it affects some of our projects. And so that will be agendized for a future meeting with all the mayors. What did occur is there was a board member that was present, so they're already aware that that's been agendized and it's certainly something that the city managers group is very well aware of because every time you need to make a decision for any type of, let's say, development or annexation and we have several projects, then it has to go before LAFCO and without a tax sharing agreement, those projects stall. And there are several projects in Vacaville that are stalled, which leads me to the October 20 meeting of LAFCO in which I attended last Monday. And at that meeting, it was shared that there were several projects throughout the county, Fairfield, Dixon and Vacaville, all having projects that cannot proceed without a tax sharing agreement because the process requires it to be approved by LAFCO and LAFCO simply asked the questions, does the city and the county have a tax sharing agreement? The answer is no, they can't move forward. So we're working through this and I'm not sure if city, our city manager, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, so I've been coordinating with both the Solano County as well as other Solano County city managers. So six of our projects are stalled right now, but two of them, the positive news is that they will be going to the board meeting for the Solano County in November. So two of them will be moving forward. So we're making slow progress, but there is progress.
Yeah, this has been, been going on for quite a long time, but I thank you for taking care of that and staying on top of that. Any other reports out from the council? Or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Item seven is back to reports of the city manager. Back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members and the community members. I want to share a positive news that city has launched a resident survey, as I mentioned at the last meeting. In addition to that, we are concluding our five-year current strategic plan. So we are engaging the community. We will be having focus groups. There will be four, three focus groups that will be held, which will be open to the community and they would be held at the Three Oaks Community Center. One of them will be on November 14th. It's a Friday from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. It would be in person. The second would be November 15th. It's a Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. That will also be in person and both in person would be held at the Three Oaks Community Center. The third session will be on Tuesday, November 18th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and that will be virtual and we will be posting information on our website as well as our Granicas portal, sharing the Zoom link as well as the dates and times. There is also a forum that's outside the council chambers. It has two QR codes. One is for you to take the survey and the other one is for you to do an RSVP for our focus groups. We would love to hear from you, get your input into what the future vision of the community, the council retreat, the senior leadership team. We need input from everybody. We need your feedback so we can define our strategic plan for the next five years. We're looking forward to that. The second update I have is our, I don't think Joanna is here, our PIO, she is working hard and we will be releasing a launch of the monthly newsletter for the city starting November, which where we will be sharing what the job opportunities are available, success of our existing projects, any detours or construction project updates, as well as it would include any upcoming events. So there will be lots of positive information that will be shared with the newsletter. We will be doing announcement on the social media for that, so feel free to sign up for that newsletter as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no presentations, we'll move on to item nine consent calendar. Any member of the council or the public wishing to pull an item for discussion, knowing that item 9E is no action? Seeing none, do I have a motion? We have a council member Richie motioned and I think the vice mayor, I said to the public as well. I didn't see anyone. If I didn't say it, the public is included when I said, any member of the council or the public, so. So we have a motion and Vice Mayor Chapman second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Next, we'll, we'll move to business from the floor. Item 10, this is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda, that is within our jurisdiction and purview. You may address the council and you may come forward now.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, excuse me, members of the council and city staff. I come before you to discuss the Corby Battery Energy Storage Facility that's in the county. I do understand that is a county matter, not a city matter, but the CEC has announced that they are coming to town to have a meeting on November 7th, or excuse me, November 6th from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. It's both in person as well as a Zoom call. I have the details here that I can leave with city staff if that's desired. I think it would be great if either this council or representatives from the council could be present to, you know, represent us, even though it is a county item. The fact of the matter is, is if there's an accident at this facility, that wind is not going to understand where the city ends and the county begins. So we're kind of all in this together, even though the jurisdictions may be a little bit different. And if members of the council can't be present, perhaps there's a delegation that could at least come from the city and represent our point of view. I think you're well aware of what our point of view is as residents of this city. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question related to that.
Question?
Yeah, I have a question for the city manager, the city attorney. Since the city of Vacaville is listed as a backup location for that project, are council members allowed to speak at, at this event?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
So this is a publicly noticed meeting of another entity or organization, so you certainly can go. You can speak as an individual, as a council member and if the council makes a certain determination on the position, then you can certainly speak on the position of the council.
With, in, no personal comments made by a council member as a citizen would jeopardize their ability to vote or influence any sort of member, any sort of ordinance conversation or anything like that related to the project?
You can certainly speak as a, as a member of the public. I'd want to give that a little more analysis, a little more thought and get back to you on that.
Okay, that, that would be great. I just wanted to make sure that, because I recognize that there can sometimes be conflicts that as council members, if we speak publicly at some of these events, I, you know, while I want to make it very clear that we are definitely listening, we're definitely monitoring our emails, but in responding to some of those requests and stuff, that there could be complications with that, correct? Depending upon how it comes across?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, first of all, consulting all the various battery storage plants, and yes, I realize most of them are not in the city's exact jurisdiction, but there's like six of them, I think, or more, that are all clustered right around near, you know, nearby Vacaville out in the county. This is ridiculous and yes, I know, there's nothing the city can directly do about it, but could anybody talk to any of those people at the legislature and patiently explain to them that a battery storage plant has no useful function? That if we had problems with, with enough energy in Solano County, which we don't, it could be fixed with, you know, a peaker plant that runs on natural gas. Peak plants can run for days on end if they need to and they don't leave chemical residue like battery storage plants do. This is just a, you know, a green energy lie that's been fostered upon the public and people are slowly waking up to it. We know that they're nothing more than filthy chemical, you know, chemical waste dumps. Now, as usual, I'm here just to remind whatever people in the audience may not be aware, that California Forever is forever creeping up on us and that this is a copy of items pulled from the county staff report that details just how much money it's going to cost every taxpayer in Solano County to feed the gappy maw of certain billionaires and certain very wealthy local politicians who have latched on to California Forever's coattails. The citizens are going to pay billions of dollars in order for that project to get off the ground. So when California, whenever this report came out, California Forever quickly pulled their petition, their proposition off the ballot last year and they're not talking about this. They're talking about all the other airhead promises they'll make, but they don't talk about this. It costs the county billions. And those of you who are warm up in bed with California Forever, some of us are aware of how much you're going to steal from us. And I have copies of this, if anybody would like some, that's compiled by Solano together.
Could you, could you please maybe provide a copy so that staff can make it available to the whole council? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Thank you then. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back, close the business from the floor. I would ask maybe both to our city attorney and also our city manager, we just, the council just approved a letter that is in opposition to Middle River Best Facility in Vacaville. We did this on consent just a few minutes ago. How would this language be addressed and maybe also addressing that the location of this is just as close to the city of Vacaville and what that might look like if we were to collectively as a council wish to make a statement directly to that particular project as well?
So for the legal matters, I'll defer to the city attorney, but Erin Morris, our community development director, she is involved in all this letter and the project, so she can provide update.
Thank you. I figure the timing is right, so we might as well hear from you.
Briefly, staff is working on a letter to the CEC to be delivered as public, as staff comments at their meeting next week and we'll be running that through the city manager's office and through legal as well. Generally, it will articulate very similar concerns as to the Middle River letter, but even since the Middle River letter was drafted, I had a great meeting with the county and they gave me some good ideas for some things that we might want to double down on and underscore. So anyway, that is under, under drafting later this week.
Great, yeah, thank you. And how would that apply towards the county's project versus the one that is situated in this particular letter?
There, both of these facilities are on the exact same road, Kilkenny, with the cities being north of Kilkenny at 80 and the counties being south of Kilkenny, not that far away. So I believe our approach will be to articulate very similar concerns for both facilities because they literally are on the same road, maybe in two different jurisdictions, but Vacaville Fire is, will be one of the main responders. They have a similar lack of water, they have a similar allocation. They have a similar location within or adjacent to the Northeast Growth Area. So I think it'll just be about furthering those interests. County also came up with an interesting approach. I know this is not an agenda item, but this is just a quick recap regarding mitigation measures for these facilities relating to fire protection and OES and all that. So staff's going to look into that too and maybe support where the county's going with those particular comments.
And I think from a legal perspective, it goes back to what Councilmember Stockton said, while there may be a desire for individuals to speak, it seems like we're talking about the same issue co-located right next to each other. What, you know, what action can we take and/or do we need to do anything in addition so that this letter also applies to that property?
So I think if you were going to go and speak and testify, you can certainly relate.
This letter?
Yes, absolutely. Say we have very similar concerns.
It's easy to say, I'm here as an individual. However, this letter that we're answering sits right next to yours.
Yes.
And convey the strong opinion plus whatever staff's working on. So, okay. Just for some clarity, I think that helps.
Yeah, and the letter includes information from our fire marshal as well. So it includes the impacts to our fire services and fire response.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right. Since we've closed business from the floor, hopefully Councilmember Stockton, that helps?
That does.
Okay. And with that, we have no public hearing. So we're going to go on to move on to item 12A. Madam City Clerk?
Yes. Item 12A is a resolution approving implementation of the Vacaville Tourism Marketing District Funding Escalator and setting forth the schedule for collection and distribution of the assessments and the completion of biannual audit reports. And Slater Matsky and Alyssa Pardini are here to give the presentation.
Give you a chance to get situated and set up? You're just used to standing up to the podium. That's all. So here you, here you go.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Chapman, members of council. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'll wait for Slater.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to present to you all tonight. My name is Slater Matsky. I'm the Economic Development Manager. I'm here tonight with Alyssa Pardini, the President and CEO of Visit Vacaville. The item before you tonight is, has a few different components. The first is for you all to receive the Visit Vacaville 2024, 2025 Annual Report. The second component will be approving a resolution, a resolution to implement the funding escalator for the transitory occupancy tax for the city. It will be increasing from 3% to 4%. And there will also be a couple of items in the resolution as well that'll be bringing the master agreement in congruency with the current payout schedule to Visit Vacaville, shifting the date from the first of the month to the 25th of the month, as well as bringing into conformity the biannual auditing schedule that's presented to the city every other year. And will that, I will pass over to Ms. Pardini and we'll be able to answer any questions you have at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, all members of council and the public. As Slater said, I am the President and CEO of Visit Vacaville and I'm here for my annual update. Go ahead and go to the first slide. This past spring at our annual tourism breakfast, I shared recent visitation numbers for Vacaville. And in 2024, visitor spending generated 239.9 million in economic impact, continuing a steady year-over-year growth. Particularly, our visitors are a mix of overnight guests and day visitors. Overnight visitors now account for 36% of total visitor spending. That is up from 32.5% last year. So we've seen a 3.5% increase in guest staying overnight in Vacaville. This growth matters because Vacaville's transient occupancy tax supports and helps fund city services and projects for the residents. And then when we look at restaurant, retail and attraction spending, 15% of that spending comes from out-of-town visitors. They really do love our attractions. 77% of attraction business is from outside of the area. And these include things like our small farms and ranches, cultural arts like our theaters, our museum, and recreation like the ice plex. Visit Vacaville, oh, this is a snapshot of our fiscal year financials. A couple notes on this slide. Visit Vacaville is funded through a Vacaville Tourism Marketing District that's separate from occupancy tax. This is a group of 15 hotel properties in town that self-assess their district. Each hotel stay includes a 3% district assessment, which supports our marketing efforts and operations. And in May of this past year, our board approved a 1% increase to that self-assessment, which takes place or going into effect November 1st of this year, which will bring that total to 4%. Another note here, in the past fiscal year, Visit Vacaville introduced employer-sponsored medical benefits for staff for the first time. And this increased our operating costs, but it is a strategic investment in our team's wellbeing and long-term stability. Also, in this next year, there will be some additional expenditure to fulfill a couple audits from the pandemic that need to be completed. And also, there will be a new section in our financials for sports tourism. That is an area of growth that our hoteliers are really passionate about exploring and bringing to Vacaville. Next slide. So related to our funding, looking directly at hotel occupancy for the fiscal year, we grew 1.6% in that occupancy. And then the average daily rates, however, have dropped about over $9. And that's our hoteliers really being competitive in the market. There's been a lot of new regional supply and they are still capturing that occupancy for Vacaville so that those guests are staying here. And Vacaville helps drive demand and promote Vacaville as a destination in several key ways. Next slide. Destination marketing efforts. We create awareness for Vacaville, the attractions and offerings here. Operating our visitor center, we welcome guests to the region at the Nut Street Shopping Center. Our Arts and Cultural Alliance, known as VACA, where we collaborate across the local arts and culture groups in Vacaville for a streamlined arts and entertainment communications for locals and visitors. We promote and enhance the experiences that can be had in Vacaville through signature events like our Taste of Vacaville and Vacaville's Farm-to-Table Dinner. We have association involvement and partnerships, both at the state and regional level, to ensure that our destination marketing stays competitive with others in the space. And we go after inclusive tourism, ensuring that Vacaville is welcoming for travelers with disabilities. And then next slide, yeah. Looking at our digital efforts, website traffic was up year-over-year 10%, with users up 17%. Our email database grew nearly 6%. Next slide. We expanded our digital advertising this year with campaigns targeting specific traveler groups, dog-friendly travelers, sensory-friendly travelers, wine lovers and outdoor enthusiasts. We saw another year of great growth on our social media channels. This past month, we actually were awarded from Facebook a Content Creator Rising Star Award, which inspires us to keep creating more engaging content. We make a variety of print publications for the community, used by both residents and visitors alike. In addition, for things to do, and we have a few items that promote things to do, we compile dining guides, we do maps for the hotels in the downtown. We have a new military discount guide that's going to be launching around Veterans Day, along with our new edition of our relocation guide for those moving to the area. We also work the public relations angle and pursue earned media. In the last fiscal year, we released 10 press releases. We pitched 17 stories to media outlets and saw 30 pieces of earned media coverage. We also hosted our first travel writer from the East Coast for a two-day itinerary, and that article is expected in mid-December. Our annual report does include content and impression numbers for a various number of events and campaigns. The transition of Restaurant Week to Taste of Vacaville is the one I'd like to highlight here. We saw over 1,200% growth year-over-year in our website traffic to the restaurant offers and nearly 200,000 social media impressions from that week. I also would like to highlight three community superstars that we gave awards to at our Tours and Breakfast. Kristy Barron from Joyful Art Center, The Main Grape, our downtown wine bar, and Roman Hawthorne, who works at residents in Vacaville and Celeste Teahouse. We could not do everything that we do without our community support, and these superstars really collaborated with us throughout the year. Which brings me to, we have several events planned for this year. We are looking for volunteers to help. I would like to throw out there that if anyone is interested in volunteering for any of these events, visitvacaville.com/volunteer-squad is where you would sign up to join our volunteer squad. We have a sensory room we're going to be running at the McBride Center for Merrymont on Main. We need volunteers that day for both our handout booth on Main Street and at the sensory room. Taste of Vacaville Week is going to be January 25th through February 1st. It's eight days, Sunday to a Sunday. We'll have events every day. We will need some volunteers that week for Restaurant Week. I love Vacaville Week, where we go around the different neighborhoods and really highlight things for our residents, is February 18th to 14th. In Plain Air Weekend is an arts and cultural weekend in April. Wings Over Solano Air Show, we will have a tent at the base and we will need some volunteers with us. And then our Farm-to-Table Dinner is going to be Friday, July 10th this year. We will be highlighting all the stone fruit from Vacaville. Next slide. So I will just also say, come say hi to us in the visitor center. We are open Monday through Friday, 9 to 5:30. We have your Vacaville merch. And in closing, Visit Vacaville remains very focused on keeping our city top of mind for travelers while ensuring tourism benefits for our community as a whole. And I truly believe and truly care about how our destination marketing fuels Vacaville's economic vitality, supports our local businesses and enhances the quality of life. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate what Visit Vacaville does. And I do see Councilmember Silva, do you have a question?
Yeah, one, thanks for answering a lot of my questions. I'm not going to go over that again here. But I, one additional question just regarding the public service volunteer opportunities, is there a age limit that you guys recommend or a cap?
Very good question. We have not put a limit on that. We might want to look at that. I would assume anyone under 16 should probably have a parent or guardian with them.
And what about maturity level for all of us?
I think that runs the gamut in our office, so that's allowed.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you for the report. I appreciate the meeting we had, but what, a few days ago, last week, maybe it was yesterday. I don't know. But, so, very excited about this, very excited about the, I just, a few things we talked about was, two real things that stuck out was Vacaville, the tourism, and like really recent tourism, and the opportunity we have that is right in our backyard. The number one wine region in the world is now Sassoon Valley. And I would love to just push Vacaville off the map and become a bedroom community for the wine. It is the best, Sassoon Valley is what Napa was 40 years ago. And we should be the place they come, stay, drink, play, and find a way to make it sticky. They have a day of wine drinking, next day, spend money on our city and the outlets, and really create that foothold. We are the place to play and stay for the wine in the Solano County region. And the other one was, the money-making opportunity to maybe possibly now Vacaville, has Merrymont on Main as our project, to maybe shift it to a Friday instead of a Tuesday. The amount of money we would earn by not, I have young kids. We race there, find a spot, race away, get ready for school. The amount of people that would stay and play and spend and hopefully sleep and wait the next day and eat and patronize the restaurants, if it was on a Friday as opposed to Tuesday, would be exponential. The amount, that would raise a lot of money awareness and it would help our local community, local restaurants. And just, it just, it would be a huge opportunity to make more money. So I think those two things I really want to lean in on.
Thank you. You make two good points. One being that community events are a great way to draw people to the area and we're here to support all the organizations that put on great events in Vacaville. So, and we've actually incorporated a lot of those into our budget for support as well. And then with the Wine Country Accolade for Sassoon Valley, we are planning to lean very heavily into that. We actually just updated all of our e-cigs with the accolade as well, so that people know, like, we are directly proximate, neighbors to Sassoon Valley. And we've worked out with the Vittner's Association, they're actually a partnership. So we have been attending their board meetings and working with them, just like Fairfield is, to promote the wines in that region.
And through the mayor?
Yes. Just to add to that as well, there's some more initiatives that we're already sort of leaning into recently as well. I mean, she wasn't able, or Alyssa wasn't able to speak on it during the presentation, but one of the things that Visit Vacaville does produce is the relocation guide for Travis Air Force Base. So it's a fantastic opportunity to be able to get eyes and information in front of people that are cycling into the base and getting that connective tissue out through that network. So that's something we're actually working on finalizing the, the edits on that that will be then distributed to the base. That's also a collateral piece that we can be sharing. I think Alyssa said also, our local Realtors and our small businesses and restaurants also use that piece as a marketing collateral to help promote the city. And in addition to that too, we're looking at developing specific targeted brochures and one-pagers and handouts that can be used in sales offices, for example, like 700 Park Downtown. So people, when they're coming to the sales office and wanting to get more information about what Vacaville has to offer, but it's a perfect opportunity to be able to incorporate that specific messaging around the wine industry, around the entertainment industry and around those other select sectors. So it's a wonderful marketing vector.
Yeah, thanks for the addition. I do get a lot of requests for that, that relocation packet. It really is informative. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you for the information. And I'll also jump on the military part as well. I do think that's really great that you're working with the base when they have the reservist weekend. And so they are particularly with which hotels are there, and that we have quite a few hotels that qualify for the reservist weekend. So I appreciate your work with that and the military discount as well. One of your events was the air show, and I'm hopeful that we will have the air show. We had to cancel some of our events for the next coming months with TRAF because of the shutdown. So hopefully we'll get that through. The other, I also wanted to say a great job with the marketing different groups, because that's, to make everyone be successful, you are targeting the youth or people with special abilities and the people who like to be outside, plus the wine group. So great job with that. My question is, do you have an association with the Vacaville Magazine? Because in the one picture, it showed the magazine. And I didn't know if that was just because we're highlighting the cows, or do you work with Vacaville Magazine? Because I do think that that's always very bright and looks inviting. And so.
I think you're referring to, actually, we had a snippet in there of a cover of one of our visitor guides. So we do do a publication that about every year, every two years, highlights a lot of things to do in Vacaville. Separately, we do advertise in Vacaville Magazine. I currently have a standing two-third page where we switch it out every issue and there are by, or a six-time-a-year publication. So we, we do advertise in there. Sometimes they'll print articles on us too, depending on what press releases we put out.
Okay, great. It was just in the one, the one slide.
Yeah.
Showed that, that Visit Vacaville. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Thank you. Great report, very good report. Just want to share that I did have an opportunity to speak with Dr. Just want to share that I did have an opportunity to speak with Dr. Esposito Noah. At the college, they, on October the 12th, they had the Pro-Challenger Tournament there, and it's been held there now for the past few years, and she is very heavily involved with that, and she's looking forward to the two of you connecting. And even though the main campus is in Fairfield, that's where the tournament takes place, we do have a campus here in Vacaville, and we are all one, and so I think that'll be a nice partnership.
Thank you. I believe Councilwoman Chapman was referring to our discussion about tennis.
Yes, pro tennis.
I will open it up to the public for any comment, if anyone wishes. All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council before I ask for a motion real quick. I will say that there's a lot of things that we do in partnership between Visit Vacaville and also the Vacaville Magazine, there's a lot of interconnections, that's what leverages it. I believe that we're receiving, this is an update, but we're also approving by simple motion what is in range for the increase of 1%, believing that what you're going to be able to do with it is, is we need to continue to further advance the message of what Vacaville is, and you, you and your team and your board do a fantastic job, so I really do appreciate it. I do have to make one comment, just because sometimes what happens is if somebody makes a comment up here in the silence, it may sound like, oh yeah, that's the great idea. Merrymount on Main is a city event, and it's not your event, so to be clear, so, real quick, Councilmember Ritchie, I would just suggest, before we think of moving something that's been on the same date for decades, we carefully consider that any change in that might really disrupt what the other loss is. Some people might stay, but some people find that as a family event. So I wouldn't want the city to make a change without real consideration and deconfliction in the future. With that, we're receiving a report, and there's a request for simple motion to adopt a subject resolution. Do I have a motion?
No move.
We have a motion and a second by the vice mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I think there's, there's a lot more to do, but appreciate it. Can't wait to see the updated packet, so. With that-- Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
With that, Madam City Clerk, I think we're on to 12B.
12B is Vacaville Solano Services Corporation's annual report on Opportunity House operations, and Director Colton is here to start the report.
Tonight's item is the annual report on Opportunity House operations presented by Vacaville Solano Services Corporation. As you may recall, in 2017, the city council approved modifications to two existing loans and provided a one-time emergency loan to help ensure continued operation of Opportunity House shelter. As part of that approval, council required an annual report summarizing program performance and participant demographics. Serena Eastman from Opportunity House is here this evening to provide that update and share highlights from the past year of operations.
Sorry, I turned it on. I did.
Well, good evening, thank you so much for having me. Like she mentioned, I am Serena, I am currently the Director of Shelters and Programs at Opportunity House, and I'm excited to share some updates with you. So over the past fiscal year, we had a couple of different areas in which we focused on, and that includes our shelters and our outreach. So you'll see here, we do have two different shelters. One is the classic Opportunity House Transitional Home, as well as My Friend's House, which is our Transitional Age Youth Shelter. We also have operated in the last year a day and shower program, in which our street outreach department has held that day center twice a week. We've also quite significantly, quite significantly have expanded our prevention work, which has ranged from eviction prevention to diversion as well. And then, of course, Youth Rising is an ongoing program that we held within the Vacaville School District High School campuses. So you'll see here that over the last fiscal year, we've actually doubled in the amount of clients served, and a huge lending handed in that is because we have expanded our prevention program. So, community members were able to receive a new benefit of being able to provide that eviction prevention program, in which they were able to receive a shallow subsidy and enroll in case management services. On the right-hand side, you will see that our breakdown of services encompasses that street outreach is the primary service that we hold. It does oversee a majority of the clients we serve, and again, street outreach encompasses both intervention and diversion efforts, so those that we work with, the day center, those that we serve within the crew program, and the eviction and prevention, as well as Opportunity House, which is a large, large portion of that. And you will notice that My Friend's House is significantly lower. A portion of the year we were closed due to a major plumbing issue, and so we were able to get that rectified, and reopened My Friend's House, which was actually filled within 10 business days. Condition of client served, so you'll see that self-reported data, 26.2% of the clients we served have self-reported a mental health disorder, 23.8% have self-reported a substance use disorder, and 24, 21% have self-reported a chronic health condition. And we have also largely served the age range of 25 to 54, with 65% of our clients being served. Again, that age range does look a little bit lower this past year because we did have the closing of the shelter temporarily, but that is one of our major areas of service. Length of client participation, so the average length of stay for a shelter participant is roughly six months. You'll also see that we have nearly a 70% rate of success in that those clients do transition out of our program and into housing, whether that be permanent supportive housing, room rentals, housing of their own. And we do have about 10% who have transitioned out either into institutions or sheltered homelessness, and then roughly 15% who have exited back out onto the street. And that is it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for the update and the presentation.
Yeah.
Councilmember Silva?
You know, people go through a lot of, you know, different tough times, and one of the things, you know, a lot of people always try to help, and there's, you know, as things evolve and there's different challenges within people in our community, a lot of people like to donate that are in those positions. What are some of the key things that are helpful or maybe not helpful if people want to find ways to support Opportunity House?
Yeah, I think there's a range of it. If it's something that's a tangible gift, obviously, basic needs like socks, underwear, those kinds of things that help relieve those financial burdens. In a practical way, if someone wanted to physically volunteer, we do have the capacity for members of the community, whether they be connected to resources or maybe provide a resource themselves, all hands on deck would help. I think that the more we're able to connect our clients to a support system that exists beyond us, the better chance that when they do graduate from a program of ours, that chance of recurrence does absolutely lessen. So the more community-based approach we can have to it, the stronger that those systems and supports can provide. So there are a range of ways to get involved. We can go from volunteering at the shelter for a day, or really being able to help create a partnership that exemplifies mentoring or career building, things like that.
And then, as far as concerns about just loss of access to different social support programs, whether it be federally funded, state-funded, locally funded, or private donation, what kind of things are you, are you seeing any trends, are there any concerns that are, that you guys see on your behalf coming up in the next couple of months?
I do think that there is always a concern of what's going to happen next. As of this point in time, a large portion of that, we're not federally funded by, so it hasn't, in that way, necessarily affected us. You do see with the food stamps and access to healthcare, that is potentially even more severely impacted in the time to come. We haven't really necessarily broached that just yet. I think it's more of the fear of what is to come than what has hit yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
Thanks for the information and your work. I have a question about the street outreach, like, how much, because that was a big portion of what you do--
Yeah.
--how much staff do you have that's able to help with the street outreach? And then, do you work with crew closely on that, or can you give us a little bit more information?
Yes, we do. So, as far as FTE, we do have a staff of, off the top of my head, I believe it's four full-time.
Dedicated to--
Yes. And their sole focus is street outreach, so whether that's operating the day centers, if that's going out into the field with crew, which we do that, and then also being able to be on standby should a community member come by the shelter or call, seeking services, things like that.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. In the slide, where you had a breakdown of your participants, I think the 18 to 25, are they, are, in My Friend's House, are they, what's the age range for My Friend's House? That's one thing. And, go ahead, you can ask.
Yeah, it's the same, so that, the specific age range that My Friend's House as a program serves is that 18 to 24 gap.
Okay, 18 to 24. All right. The group that you're unable to reach, and they end up going back out onto the, into the streets, what percentage of that age group make up those that return to the street? Would you know that figure right off?
The age group, the age group returning back to the street?
Yes. Are many of them between the ages of 18 to 25, 24?
I don't have the exact data off the top of memory. I would say that it's significantly less. A lot of times, what ends up happening with that age group, if they are not self-sufficient, so to speak, or have something that's already planned, whether that be some kind of program where their housing and work are intertwined, a lot of them are reunited with some sort of family member. So actually re-entering the streets is very loud for that age range.
That's good to hear. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
The public for any comment? And I see none, but I will tell you, Serena, thank you for what you're doing and the entire team and the partnership between the community, the Opportunity House, but also for the City of Vacaville and with crew. It's been a long, longstanding positive relationship, so look forward to that continuing. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
With that, I'm looking for a motion--
Motion to accept the annual report.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we will move on, Madam City Clerk.
Item 12C is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Community Action Partnership of Solano JPA, Solano County, and the cities of Benicia, Fairfield, Rio Vista, Sassoon City, Vacaville, and Balaio for cost-sharing of the coordinated entry system. And again, Director Colton will start off the presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm here for the council to consider entering into the MOU with Community Action Partnership of Solano Joint Powers Authority, as well as the county and the other members of the county, for the cost of operating the coordinated entry system. For a little bit of background, CAP Solano JPA started in 1999 as the Solano Safety Net Consortium. The goal was simple, bring together local governments and agencies to coordinate efforts around poverty, homelessness, and issues that no single city could solve alone. In 2008, the organization was renamed Community Action Partnership of Solano JPA to better reflect its role of coordinating countywide action and linking to state and federal funding streams. Vacaville formally joined the JPA in 2014, and a year later took the role as fiscal agent. That means that our city has provided administration and financial management services overseeing grants, ensuring compliance and managing millions of dollars in resources for the region. In 2022 and 2023, governance shifted from a staff-led approach to an elected official-led approach, and that transition gave the JPA a stronger voice in shaping policy and helped to ensure regional decisions are tied directly back to each city's city council priorities. For Vacaville, this has meant more direct impact and influence on how resources are allocated and strategies are developed. The Continuum of Care, or COC, is a HUD-recognized body responsible for planning and coordinating homeless housing and services at a regional level. In Solano County, our COC is called Housing First Solano. CAP Solano plays a role as the collaborative applicant on behalf of the COC, which means it is responsible for applying for federal funding, coordinating with local jurisdictions, and making sure our county system meets HUD requirements. And this regional approach ensures that Solano remains competitive for federal funds. How this all ties together is that within the COC, there is a coordinated entry system, and this is essentially the front door into services for the region. It provides a standardized way for people experiencing homelessness to access help regardless of where they enter the system. Through the coordinated entry system, individuals are assessed and prioritized based on vulnerability and need, and then are referred to the most appropriate housing or service option. HUD requires communities to operate a coordinated entry system, but beyond compliance, it ensures fairness, consistency, and efficiency in connecting people to resources. Vacaville, in the past, has shown strong leadership through our financial commitments to regional solutions, and over the last two coordinated entry memorandums of understandings, or MOUs, we've invested more than $364,000 to help sustain a coordinated entry system operations. And beyond the coordinated entry system, council recently approved participation in the CAP Solano JPA staffing MOU, and that agreement commits Vacaville to just under $375,000 through 2028 to help professionalize the JPA staffing, ensure dedicated staff, like an executive director, who is joining me here tonight, grants manager, and homeless coordinator. Together, these investments reflect Vacaville's effort and a long-term commitment to both strengthening the system of care and making sure that our residents can access the services they need. Vacaville's participation in the coordinated entry system and CAP Solano JPA doesn't just go one way. Vacaville has seen a return in its participation in these, on these boards. Since 2015, more than $1 million has come back to the community through programs supported through coordinated, or I'm sorry, through CAP Solano funding. This includes $32,000 to Family Resource Center for Prevention and Diversion, nearly $86,000 in COVID emergency shelter funding, and over half a million dollars in youth-focused housing and outreach service through Vacaville Solano Services Corporation, which we just saw in previous presentation. And on top of that, Vacaville has been part of a regional homeless outreach approach board, supported with more than $364,000. And we receive targeted funding support to support youth through the Continuum of Care Youth Advisory Board. And so those meetings and activities are managed through VSSC, Vacaville Social Services Corporation. And that translates, so these are examples of how our financial commitment to the COC and the CAP Solano JPA translate into real tangible services for our residents. So with that, I have the Executive Director of CAP Solano JPA, Deshaun Waters, here to provide more information about the coordinated entry system and CAP Solano JPA.
Good evening, Mayor. There we go. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff. As we, as I get into this, I just want to thank you all for your investment and your partnership with the CAP Solano JPA, as long as, along with you having a vision for, and a respect and value for regionalization and a coordinated effort. And so, Staffing is here. Since we've, you know, my name is Deshaun Waters. I've been running social service programs and housing programs in Southern California and Northern California for the last 20 years, my entire professional career, honestly. And, yeah, so the CAP Solano JPA is a community action organization, so in addition to being the backbone for our COC, we are also tasked with ending poverty. And so I'm really looking forward to jumping into this work and really bringing a more regionalized approach to it, where they haven't had that staff and support before. All right, so, since we've joined, the first thing we did was just integrate into the system, supporting the COC, the COC new staffing. A lot of our providers, as you've seen from some of the presentations, are overworked, not overworked, but they're inundated with work, and so they need additional support, going for grants, just setting meetings, getting that thing, getting that information going. And so we did that. We've worked on building shared accountability and strategic direction, so a lot of our providers within the community were unaware of how their contracts work, so providing that technical support, seeing where the gaps are. We did surveys to identify gaps analysis, where are, where are the holes, how can we support-- support? And where is additional funding needed? We've established a new administrative system. So our team has been working with the City of Vacaville to eventually transition the financial component over. That is a task within itself, but it's happening and we're learning. And then finally, there are mechanisms within our county that we are just not utilizing effectively, right? So our COC wasn't collaborating with our tripartite advisory board. Our tripartite advisory board is a board that is mandated through our CSBG funding. And so we just need these advisory bodies to work in partnership. They have a good general makeup with low-income, private sector, public sector. And so having these different voices can really help shape the decision-making that takes place within our entire jurisdiction. Part of that was aligning our funding. Like, let's not, let's make sure we're not duplicating our efforts and utilizing our dollars more efficiently. So we created a funding decision tree. In that funding decision tree, we look at what dollars are coming in, what are the eligible uses for it, and then how can we layer it within our current system so that we're not duplicating efforts? Do we have dollars here in permanent housing? Okay, do we need them here in rapid rehousing, prevention and diversion, street outreach? And so by utilizing this method, we get input from our COC, our tripartite advisory board, come back and look at, and then bring that back to the JPA so that we can make the most informed decision as possible. Regionalization. So my goals, regional goals, my goals for this is to strengthen coordinated entry systems. So you just received a presentation from Opportunity House. Street outreach is a major component, and it's also part of the homeless action plan you guys have here. We need to have our coordinated entry system be a front door for homelessness. Right now, it's set up as appointment only, and so there's just room for opportunity to strengthen the data that comes through here, as well as in our entire region. And so by strengthening coordinated entry, not only do you guys, can we ensure here in the City of Vacaville that folks get the services that they need, but we can also access resources outside of the city's jurisdiction, which ultimately saves dollars. So for example, today, I even met with the Workforce Development Board. We're working on getting those folks integrated into the system. So there was a question about the impacts of things that happen at the federal level. One of them is that our, so through our HUD NOFO, we have a few permanent supportive housing services, but at the federal level, they're going to say we can only use 30% of those dollars for PSH, which means that we have to start looking at what happens to the other PSHs that we fund. Do they go to transitional housing models? And if so, we need to connect those folks to jobs and other opportunities. And so by, again, bringing this regionalized model to the community, we're helping support each jurisdiction. You know, again, another regional goal is just aligning with city goals. I was a resident in Vallejo, I'm now a resident in Vacaville, and Councilmember Stockton's jurisdiction. Every city is different. And so how do we, after we set a stable foundation, how do we meet the needs of each municipality to ensure that we're meeting those needs and supporting the dollars that you guys put into our efforts? So why coordinated entry? I've kind of said that, but the core focus of coordinated entry is access, assessment, prioritization, and referral. My dream and my vision and what we're working on for coordinated entry is to get access points in every jurisdiction, a place where folks can walk in, get connected to services, be assessed, and then be prioritized and referred out to those services. So whether you have a warming shelter, whether they come through street outreach, there's one place where you can meet people where they are, and then they can get access to resources throughout the region.
Next slide, please.
And so some of the things that we've done to address this is we have a new HMIS administrator, BitFocus. They actually own the database that we use, so we'll be able to create these access sites, be more efficient with the data that we bring back to you all. Our outreach teams will be able to do assessments out in the field. Right now, you have to come in. Me personally, I like to see someone face-to-face. I'm not going to be on the phone with you. I want to meet with you. I want to speak with you. And the folks in the community are like that as well. They don't all have access to phones, cellular devices to make appointments. So by giving the outreach teams the ability to assess in the community, that increases our access. I believe here in Vacaville, in the last pick count, we had about 194 people. About 46% of those folks had a disabling condition. You know, it's just unreasonable to expect them to like make an appointment all on their own without support, especially when they've been on the street for as long as they have been. Increasing the number of assessors goes into that. Again, so supporting the City of Vacaville specifically, this ask is to the City of Vacaville. So I've been working with city staff to align the JPA initiatives, and our JPA board members, to align JPA initiatives with Vacaville's homeless action plan. We want to establish a local access point within the city, train Vacaville staff to utilize HMIS system effectively, and connect those local outreach and housing placements with the regional strategy, as I mentioned earlier. And here we have data on the, on coordinated entry itself. But as you just heard in the previous presentation, like, we need to have more efficient data. You asked about the youth. Where are they? How are we tracking them? If we had an access site where people could walk in and they could actually assess, we probably have better data on it. And so while you can see here, there's a huge need for it. In 2020, in the prior year, we only had 591 intakes taken. Our coordinated entry system integrated 211 where folks could call in, and so we're up to 1,000. So there is a need. People are trying to reach out and get access to resources, and I'm just carrying out that work. Thank you.
So the coordinated entry system MOU is at the center of tonight's request, and it impacts Vacaville and the region. So for Vacaville, it ensures that our residents have direct, fair access to housing and services, and also helps bring additional state and federal resources back into our community. It also helps support, as mentioned, the steps outlined in the homeless action plan that was recently approved, ensuring that local efforts are aligned with the regional system. For the JPA and the Housing First Solano Continuum of Care, the MOU helps sustain coordinated entry system operations, which are required by HUD. It strengthens data sharing and coordinated access across all seven cities, and it directly advances the regional goals outlined earlier, from expanding housing options to preventing homelessness to improving youth services. Tonight, council is being asked to sign on to the next coordinated entry system MOU. The previous MOU expired May of this year, and CAP Solano extended the contract with the current coordinated entry system operator using prior funding years savings through November of this year. The new MOU would cover the period starting December of 2025 through May of 2028, and staff and city manager have already reviewed and provided comments on the draft MOU to the Executive Director, to Deshaun. And Vacaville's share of the commitment total for the three years is 206, a little over $206,000. And the anticipated amount for the current year, for this current fiscal year, was already included. So it was estimated and already included in the city's budget. And so then we would add the additional fiscal year '27 and '28 costs. So with that, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the MOU for the coordinated entry system between CAP Solano JPA, the county, and the City of Vacaville, as well as five other cities in the county. That would start December 1st and go through May 31st of 2028. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation and the update, and appreciate that you are committed to, you can clearly hear it in your passionate voice, and also as a local resident. It's like when you live somewhere, you understand it, you believe it. And so thank you. The question I had was on the HMIS in there. It says train Vacaville staff. HMIS, the point, you know, the point of entry seems to have been the problem in the past sometimes. I see that clearly you're up almost 100% even year over year as far as that. Do you see, other than just Vacaville staff, what other staff could be trained to use the HMIS system? Because sometimes it's like, you're not always available. So you train Vacaville staff. Does that include the Opportunity House? Does it include any other nonprofit that works with Vacaville?
That's a good question. I'll take the first stab, and then please correct me on anything, Brian. I think the idea is not that Vacaville staff would be trained to be a primary source to input information in the system, but that if someone comes to FRC or another access point to obtain services for any reason, they would have the ability to also enter that client into the HMIS system to help them find housing or other resources throughout the region. Opportunity House actually already is an HMIS operator, and so if they come into contact first with someone from Opportunity House, then Opportunity House would take the opportunity to enter that. So that's the idea or the vision behind staff who serve residents in that capacity, who are seeking services, to also have the ability to do that.
Great. Thank you very much.
And when you talk about faith, like, we have faith-based organizations specifically here in Vacaville. So like, some of the folks are already doing the work, creating access sites. Those folks can also get them into.
That's exactly where I'm going with this. So yeah, so thank you. Councilmember Silva?
Along the same question, can you just, a lot of it was already clarified. I'm just trying to understand, you know, the, how would one, so I understand the vision, I understand the intent. It sounds like we want to have more, more trained individuals to be able to access this. How is that, how is that control? How is that, how is there accountability as far as like making sure that people are connected? Or, you know, let's say somebody comes up to somebody for help, oh, I got you, then maybe they don't follow through. So just kind of, and maybe, actually, I'll just put out there, I'd like to go through my own like mock experience of that. So for example, like, I had a student actually come to me this morning, experiencing homelessness, she's not in Solano County, she's a former student, excuse me. And she was just asking like, what is out there? So I just, you know, I direct her to that. But I'm not quite clear on what is that, what would the actual process be for an individual? And maybe for me, since I'm a visual type of hands-on person, that it'd be worthwhile going through a mock situation.
Am I? Okay. So if an individual came to you in need of services, you would refer them to an access site. So whether it's a faith-based organization, Opportunity House, you would refer there, or you can call 211, and that can get them access, get them the first initial connection and access to the system. By having HMIS, a provider would be able to follow up. So right now, to your point, if you referred someone to 211 or even to someone who could provide access, like, you may not know what happens. By having those access points out in the community, you can see, a provider can see, can clearly track who was referred, where, where they are in the system. And even if they cannot see like certain details, like, let's say it was like a domestic violence case or something like that, you would still be able to find out who the case manager is and figure out, you know, that way. Does that help?
So I would just, I would send them to like one of five options, one of five departments or contacts?
Correct, correct. But there would be some specifically in this municipality?
Would there be a, some, like a website or something where I can just, you know, if I had the ability to access that, okay, here's five current up-to-date sources that are active? Is there something to that?
For sure. Resource Connect Solano has a website. Resource Connect Solano operates our coordinated entry system, and that's where you send them to, and I will make sure to provide you all with that information.
All right, thank you. And for sure, our FRC.
Yep.
And let's see, Vice Mayor Chapman?
Thank you for the presentation. Question, you had mentioned that in the past Vacaville served as the fiscal agent for the JPA, and now that that task is being transitioned over to the JPA, over to our present CEO here. Does that mean that at the time when we were doing, performing as the fiscal agent, we were not required to pay additional funds into the overall pot? Are we now, in lieu of doing, providing the service, we will now, this year, give you $66,000?
That's a good question. Vice Mayor Chapman, I can answer that. So we actually still serve as the fiscal agent through the end of this fiscal year, and it will be fully transferred at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th of 2026. In the past, our contribution to, as serving as the fiscal agent, was partially unfunded. So some of that work is funded through administrative contracts that we have on certain grants, and then some of that work, there just was no administrative dollars to be, to reimburse. So that in the past was considered like an in-kind contribution to CAP Solano JPA. With the execution of the most recent staffing MOU, it basically outlines that as far as the staffing contribution that the city would make, it would be deducted by the value of the unreimbursed cost that the city had in being the fiscal agent. And so each year, starting with last fiscal year, we track that information and then provide that to the JPA. And then once we are no longer the fiscal agent, we will start receiving a credit of a portion of that amount over a five-year period to how much we pay towards the staffing MOU. That does not, that is not, however, applied to the coordinated entry system.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you for the information, and I have a question about acronyms. I do not know. HMIS. So what is HMIS?
Human Management Information System.
And so there's, is that countywide or beyond the county?
Countywide.
So all of us, anyone who seeks services should be in the system? So if they got it, then they're, okay. Thank you. And then the second question is, on Slide 7, you showed that Vacaville's share was like 1.16 million. And how is that determined? Is it determined from like how many residents each city has, or how many homeless are in need of services? Or how is that determined? With Slide 7, no, that's not the one before. Oh, here. Has brought in over 1.16 million in resources. So is the amount of resources that we got back like commensurate to the size of the city, or how did they determine that's what we would get back?
So this is through responses to RFPs that were made available through CAP Solano JPA for services. So as an example, the CAP Solano JPA will be releasing an RFP for rapid rehousing tailored to youth coming up here. And so an agency in Solano, I'm sorry, in Vacaville responded to that RFP for those services and was awarded those dollars. So each one of these contracts is because an agency applied for and was awarded funding for whatever that program was.
Okay, so that was, that really answers my question, because we got some of the money for my friend's house because we were ready. So if we have a homeless roundtable and we're working toward it and we have a distinct thing, then we can answer the next RFP. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
And you also represent us on CAP Solano.
Yes. Councilmember Fremaw and I enjoy going over there and seeing what we can do to help unhoused population. First off, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Waters, for coming here. I know we've had many meetings, lunches, we've discussed a lot of this. I think the coordinated entry system is a no-brainer for us to invest in this along with the rest of the county. Not only is it providing valuable information for CAP Solano, but it's also providing valuable information for Ms. Colden and your department as well. I think it's absolutely essential. CAP Solano, I think, I really liked the slide showing what we've been able to obtain through CAP Solano by this coordinated effort. We've been able, we've been at a net positive for being able to have access to these additional dollars to provide additional services for our unhoused populations and the different grants, the different individuals that are affected by some of these grants. I know that one of the ones on there, while I was on CAP Solano, that we were really excited about was being able to pay off the note for my friend's house. That was, I think, that 360 something, or 370,000 dollars. So I want to thank CAP Solano for the work that they're doing. And I know you've been very busy, Ms. Colden, with taking on the additional work. I want to tell you, Mr. Waters, at the end of the fiscal year, she's gone. So we got to get on top of making sure we have that fiscal agent, staff member, and I have no doubt we're going to get lots of applicants and qualified people to do that. The other thing I wanted to encourage council to do beyond just today is, Mr. Waters has definitely made himself available to me to discuss things. I know that collectively as a council, we provide direction, but I think it's really important that we also connect with him like we do with Ms. Colden, because there are so many opportunities, not only to help people just in Vacaville, but also regionally. And CAP Solano is doing that. work. This HMIS and the coordinated entry system, these are all ways that we can make sure that we're communicating in the same, you know, digital language, so that that way, when somebody is contacted in another municipality, but we, you know, on one day, but in another day are contacted here, we have a really good idea of what their situation is and what their needs are. And so I'm very supportive of this, I definitely want to hear what the public has to say, but I've just seen how crucial the information that this is able to provide us is to actually obtaining grant funding and also maintaining those funds, which is a huge undertaking, so thank you for the great work that you're doing, I know you've been drinking from a fire hose with seven different municipalities with different needs, you know, all kind of vying for different dollars or different assistance with their unhoused populations, and so just keep doing the work, but thank you for reaching out and connecting with a lot of the different stakeholders that we have throughout the county, not just here in Vacaville, but throughout the county, and if there's anything that me or the rest of the council can do to support you, I would just encourage you to meet with all of us if you can, even if it's just a phone call or something like that, because it's so nice having you on the board now, because before, we had a lot of piecemeal, the staff members helping and communication was a huge issue, so thank you for being here, and thank you for bringing this item in front of us, I'm interested to hear what everybody else has to say, but I definitely am a fan.
Councilmember Fremell?
Yes, thank you, just wanted to say how impressed I've been with you since you got there, and just the way you've carried yourself, and this guy is a bright guy, and he's got his finger on the pulse, and I think that he will serve all seven cities, you know, and just trying to fit the pieces together and figure out, you know, you've got a lot of different personalities at the CAP Solano JPA there, some very interesting people, I mean, you know, wherever two or more are gathered there, you shall have problems, right? So anyways, just want to let you know, you've got my support, and I really appreciate that you really have an understanding of the big picture, and Mrs. Colden, just same with you, you know, so that's it, I'm looking forward to getting to know you better, and spending more time with you, and collaborating more with you, so, thank you.
I will open it up to the public now for any comment. Seeing that, I'll bring it back, and we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I appreciate it, and just for one clarification, for the public and staff, you didn't hear something, but I heard it, Ms. Colden is not leaving the city of Vacaville, it's just that CAP Solano will no longer have it, so just for clarification.
Did I say that wrong?
No, you said it, but it was just one of those moments, I'm thinking, no, no, that's right, it's just for the end of the fiscal year part of your staff.
We're looking forward to having her on the body, thank you.
That's right, all right, Madam City Clerk, I think we're moving on to Dee.
This is a study session on draft 2025 goals and policies for community facilities districts and fiscal impact analyses, and Director Morris and Director Matsumiya and Demir Powell will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, members of the City Council and all those in attendance. For background on this item, the Mellow Roos Act was enacted in 1982, it authorizes community facilities districts, or CFDs for short, to fund public infrastructure and/or municipal services with a special tax on property. In 2007, municipalities were required to adopt goals and policies for CFDs, Vacaville adopted goals and policies for CFDs in 2008. On June 10th, 2025, the City Council received a presentation on CFDs and fiscal impact analyses, staff presented a CFD and FIA best practices study conducted in May 2025 by Economic and Planning Systems. City Council directed staff to update the CFD goals and policies, and here's a map of existing CFDs in Vacaville. In summer 2025, staff began developing draft goals and policies for CFDs and FIAs, the draft goals and policies for CFDs is a document that is an update to the existing 2008 goals and policies document, the draft goals and policies for FIAs is a new policy document. The purpose of the draft goals and policies for CFDs and FIAs is to establish a consistent methodology based on current best practices and provide clarity for their establishment and implementation. Updated goals and policies will apply to new development proposals after adoption, previously approved projects may be reassessed using new best practices. Significant updates to the goals and policies for CFDs include updating the value-to-lean ratio from 3.1 to the current industry standard of 4.1, or four to one, excuse me, lowering the maximum total tax rate on the property tax bill from 2% to 1.8%, clarifying reimbursements, the application process, credit criteria, procedures for development progress, and required agreements and studies, and supporting the use of the bond opportunities for the land development, or BOLD, and the statewide community infrastructure skip programs. Significant components of the goals and policies for FIAs include identifying projects required to submit in FIA, establishing a standard methodology for approaches and assumptions, identifying residential and non-residential land use assumptions, required data sources and calculation methods, identifying assumptions and approaches for general fund revenue and project growth-related expenditures, and requiring an annual update to cost and revenue Community outreach was conducted for this initiative, on September 8th, 2025, a presentation was held at a quarterly development community outreach meeting. On September 18th, 2025, the draft documents were posted to the city's website, email notice was sent requesting feedback. On October 6th, 2025, staff met with a developer focus group, and staff received comments regarding the value-to-lean ratio, credit quality requirements, the terms and conditions of bonds, applicable projects, skip and bold programs, and the FIA methodology, staff provided responses, clarifying policies, and revised the drafts to incorporate feedback. As for next steps, if directed by the City Council, staff will revise the draft documents with feedback from the council and the public, and staff will return to the City Council for adoption of the goals and policies. And the request is to, by a simple motion, direct staff to revise the draft 2025 goals and policies for community facilities districts, and draft 2025 goals and policies for fiscal impact analyses with any feedback from the council, and return to the City Council for adoption. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and I know that there's been public outreach, I'm looking for anyone on the council that has any questions before we move forward. I see no questions, so I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public for comment. I see you up there, all right, at the podium.
Am I the only one going to speak on this tonight?
Maybe.
Well, I'm very passionate about this, I feel that the CFDs' ability, the way they've been handled in the city have been highly abused. As far as the ones for the infrastructure, I accept those, I think they're great, you know, they helped to get the services in the ground at a cheaper price, and thereby helping build, given us the ability to build cheaper homes. The services, the thing that I don't like about the services start out with is that there is no sunset date, these services go on and on indefinitely, and to me, I have asked questions in these services, a lot of them are not being completed, fire stations that are supposed to be moved and built are not being done. So just in a simple calculation that we did on a couple of the projects that I have been involved with, there's 2,500 homes, and those homes are averaging $2,500 apiece, which equals out to $6.2 million a year, $6.2 million a year is going into the fund, and in this particular area, it was supposed to be for fire and for police, there's been no, as we've seen it, additional fire, police for that area, and to me, if you hire a police officer, I hope he's not for one area, I hope that he's for the city of Vacaville, but $6.2 million with an escalator of approximately 3% COLA a year in perpetuity is a lot of money going into the general fund, and as I view it, it is a means of, because I don't think it's all being used, because I haven't been able to find any way, or tracking any way, how it's actually been used properly, as we're being told, for fire, police, fire stations, and so forth and so on, and so I'm finding it and calling it a way of circumventing Proposition 13, so, and it creates a hardship where the goal is right now in the city is to build workforce housing, I'm not going to be cut off here in a minute.
Just continue to thought, you're the only one speaking.
But to build workforce housing, and when you tie these CFDs at these high rates that we're looking at, and you tie them to the DIF fees that we are working, all working on, trying to get them together, is what we're doing, we're creating projects that cannot be built, we have existing projects in town right now that are approved, ready to be built, and are not being built due to the highest CFDs, I am not involved in those, but they are there, so I wanted to just bring attention to these different items, and if I were to make a goal, I'd like to see the, you know, if the CFDs need to be done, I'd like to see them all created in a range of the 400 to 500 for, especially for these workforce housing, it's tolerable, we've run numbers, that will work, and I'm not afraid to put that on the table, but at the same time, I would also like to see triggers and sunsets. Triggers, what is the project that the money, that the money's going to be used for, when's the trigger pulled that it's going to be used, and how long is it going to need, is it going to be needed? If it's a fire station, I'm just picking that out of the air, if it's a fire station, I want to know the trigger, when it's going to be started, going to be completed, going to be paid for, and when it's done, I'd like to see it come to a sunset. These things go on indefinitely, indefinitely, and it's causing a lot of people a lot of dollars, and new people, and this is about the last thing I want to say on this, when they're trying to buy a workforce housing, and then today FHA/VA loans are running in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000, and the cost that this is causing is to rate at $2,600 is equal to that of about $50,000, which is about 10% of the price of the home, so when you're trying to get young people or people to come in and buy these homes, they're getting faced with 10%, $200 a month, and they're having a hard time, you know, getting into the home, period, and now you're taking money off the top in the very beginning, and then you're charging the money every month, so they're very, very hard to do it, at least with your infrastructure, with your infrastructure CFDs, they create quite a good benefit, I want to give a second on that, if we have to put in major sewer lines, major anything, and we use a skip program, there is a time that we're using the money, there is a time period that it's going to run, and then it does come to an end and it sunsets, and, and once again, it's cheaper financing for us as developers, it's the cheapest financing that we could possibly get, which is passed on to our buyers.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item? I know the council's also received, I think, a public comment as well. Seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the council for discussion, and any policy recommendations to staff, I think, I'll go ahead and start by saying, first of all, can staff maybe answer or respond to any of the comments?
Sure, I can respond to them, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, so related to the first question, why is there no sunset date, there isn't a sunset date on services CFDs, because the expectation is that the city's going to have to provide service to these new areas in perpetuity, that when we're talking about police service, fire service, when we're talking about park maintenance, things that are part of the services CFD, that from now until forever, the expectation is that the service will be provided. If it was tied to construction, and that's kind of what the infrastructure CFD is, and so, for example, if we were to take the Lagoon Valley CFD, for the infrastructure portion of that, the fire station that's going to be built out there, the permanent one, even the temporary one, that would be part of the infrastructure part of that, there would be bonds issued, there would be debt that would be paid on those bonds, and then that, once the bonds are paid off, that portion of the CFD would go away. Actually, operating the fire station, paying for the staffing out there, the cost of actually operating and running the fire station, those are going to go on forever, and that's what the services CFD is meant to capture, and that's why there's no sunset date for that. As far as how is our CFD revenues allocated, kind of have a pocket slide to kind of show that, and so on the left, you have a table of all of our current services CFDs, this doesn't include Lagoon Valley, just because it's kind of early on in the process, it hasn't fully developed out, but these other ones have been in place, a bulk of them since kind of the early to mid 2000s, it shows how much we brought in in revenue from fiscal year 2425, so this previous fiscal year, it's about 8.1 million, it is the South Town CFD, CFD 11, that brings in the most of about 5.6. As far as how it's allocated, it does get allocated to police and fire, if you wanted to see sort of what the amount that's allocated to both departments, it's in the budget document, in the budget document, the adopted budget, on both the police page and fire page, and with every other department, it shows kind of salaries and benefits, what makes up their budget, and also how that's funded, and the CFDs align item in there. For police and fire, CFD 8 through 12, the way that those were formed back in the day, was to pay for police and fire, it didn't designate sort of how much goes to police or fire, and so the way we've treated that for the budget is that that gets allocated 50/50, whatever we bring in, that gets split up between both departments. For CFD 1, that was specifically set up, I think, in 1978 to pay for a quarter of the fire, fire station 74 operated, and so for that reason, the fire department does get the entire portion of CFD 1, that's why there is the way that kind of balances, they get CFD 1, and then 50% of 8 and 12. In terms of the budget, you know, for the police department, CFDs fund about 6% of the PD budget, and for the fire department, it funds about 9%, so that is how that gets allocated to both departments. As far as kind of the skip bold and forming a CFD, you can form an infrastructure CFD kind of in either one of those ways, the city can do it itself, city's also part of skip, the council approved, I think, back in 2018 or 19, and then we have a bold pilot program, and so that's the more recent kind of JPA that we joined, that is more limited, and so that is one where, based off council direction, with the bold program, it was that that would only be used in the downtown area, it would be for development that I believe was smaller than five acres, and so like the only one that currently qualifies that we've had go through that program is 700 Park on Main.
Let me share, there'll be more discussion, I see Councilmember Ritchie.
All right, thank you so much, I'll try to be brief, you know, I've had a lot of back and forth, I actually met with Richelieu a few times, and kind of talked a lot of passion about, kind of geeked out about finance and housing, and how to, I keep this analogy along beyond councils, like a marriage, city and developers, you can't force someone to love you, it's got to be mutual beneficial for both parties to make it happen, you know, seeing the, when I saw the map of the CFDs, I think one of the oldest CFDs, like 87 or 78, that amount, you know, I don't, I know we have to have infill, the infill is where everyone focused on the first part of it, is if something's infill in the Vacaville, there's already services, city, police and fire already go in the areas, they're servicing, there's already services set up, I would like to look at possible exploring exemptions. If it's new development, I mean, East Leisure Town, I mean, does growth area, Lagoon Valley, I understand, but if it's already infill, and it's a certain size, we need to figure out how to make infill work and have a reduction in the CFDs, that still brings money in, but one of the conversations happened a lot in the last few weeks across California is Prop 13, someone talked about it, so I ran a few numbers earlier this week, you have one house that's under the Fannie Mae loan limit, or especially VA, like South Town infill is huge. Town infill is huge. That development is the close proximity to people that work and live on Travis. Those houses that we are potentially going to do are going to be certain lot size that hopefully can fit and house airmen and women, or people that are workforce housing, those are smaller houses. Have them have, they're going to have diff funds. Those fees can be passed on to purchaser. CFDs are, there's a reoccurring, not recurring, cost. That's a reoccurring cost that will hurt affordability. I want to look at infill having a reduction of the CFDs to look at making it possible. I mean, we can't expect to have affordable housing, it's a rational term now, but if the cost to build breaks a project, we have to figure out the infill opportunity, lowering the CFDs, we can talk about diff later, but we have to be able to build houses in the price point and make it work to allow the developers to be excited about building smaller houses, workforce housing, for ownership. Ownership as well, I mean, it's so, it's so important. So, you know, the whole Prop 13, you can bring one house in at half a million dollars at a 1.28% tax rate, and it's about the same as about five to seven houses in Vacaville that haven't changed ownership in the last 10 years. So if you don't understand, like, you don't have this straps body with a huge CFD on a house that has an actual assessed value at half a million. It's like five to seven homes. My mom's neighborhood Orchard Park. It's amazing, by bringing new homes in Vacaville, you will offset areas that bring like $1,000, $4,000 a year. Some people pay that per month in Vacaville under some CFDs. So we've got to take that into consideration. You're bringing homeownership, more money, a higher tax rate at the Prop 13, that has to go into the equation when we look at the CFD range. I could talk forever, but like, that's really, I just want to take small bites and look at the CFD, it has to be adjusted for the purpose. We're trying to get affordable housing, we have to allow them to build it at a cost that makes sense.
Before I go to Councilmember Stockton, I'm just going to just raise the question as we go. We've heard triggers and sunsets. I think part of it is, is if we're setting policy tonight, or not, we're making recommendations for a policy to come back, it's like, what do we look at when we form a CFD? What's the basis for the formation? The city of Vacaville really leaned into the service CFDs between 2004 and 2006, just based upon the summary slide here. Eight, nine, 10, and 11, and 12, were all within about a 24-month period. And again, none of us, some of us worked here, but I would assume that none of us set the policy. The council was different, staff was different. My, my ask and my need is, is as we set policy, we learn whatever lessons that we've learned over the last 20-plus or minus years. We know that Prop 13 changed everything. I appreciate what Councilmember Ritchie said, and that is, as somebody who's making a, holding on to a house for 30 years is not paying the same amount as somebody who's buying new, but say is an infill and not even in the CFD. But then if you're part of a CFD, and we're calling it growth, the question really becomes, when does a particular area of a city no longer be deemed new? Right? I worked in the, in the police department, and for 20 years, it was the new building. And at some point, it's no longer the new building. And so as we move to our East of Leisure Town, part of why we're here, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're looking at the, the new growth areas, and the appetite over 20 years is, if you're a developer and you're not in South Town, but you're near South Town, you need to join a CFD, or there's going to have to be some contribution as a, as new, that's correct. And then there might be the debate, well, if I'm to the north, well, I would really like to join, we'll call it CFD eight, North Village, because I think, at least in this slide, it's roughly $500. The fire servicing in there is Station 73, but the residents in CFD 10, equally to the north, but to the west versus the east, their CFD is four times the amount. Now, in 2004 to 2006, I don't think anyone was really looking at the multiplier of 2% to 3% a year. But here we find ourselves, and so I don't want tonight to be a blame game. It's like, did we learn anything along the way on how to balance these? Is, is the building of, of city facilities, like a fire station that can also act as a police substation, is that in a service CFD in perpetuity? And is that the right way? And so from a policy standpoint, if we build a building, should that be paid for over the next 50, 100 years in the CFD, or is that infrastructure? So I want to make sure whatever our policy is focuses on what is the services, knowing that ultimately, most of the stations where that we grow will age, and that we'll take advantage of tax changes because of the, the property taxes. It's just that there's a lot of history here that causes us to say, what is the formation? So whatever the policy is, and maybe you can speak to it, Ken, are we seeing things different today without blaming the past on how we would form this? Because what will happen come December and beyond is there'll be an example of what this policy looks like in the form of a cost. And that's when we're either going to have hit the mark or we're going to miss the mark. And I've heard things like, do you, do you scale it based on size? Or maybe smaller projects such as, you know, high-density multifamily at a particular number doesn't have to hit a CFD because it hits our goals. Are we thinking this way? I mean, this is very broad as a policy, with edits from 20 years ago, but how are we thinking?
Yeah, so with the fiscal impact analysis document, I think that's really the key document here, because when we're talking about a services CFD and whether that's required or not, it really is that fiscal impact analysis, and that's the, the work that's done to see how much revenue is this going to bring into development, and how much is this project going to cost? I'd say one of the big things with what we're doing going forward that's different than what was done in the past is that there was kind of inconsistent methodology with how these CFDs were formed. You know, they were formed, like you were saying, Mayor, in a short period of time. I think going from one CFD to the other, the metrics that were used, whether it's, you know, the number of police officers you hire per household, or per population, or even the way that revenue was treated was deferred. And so I think as time's gone by, and to kind of see how these were formed, and also current best practices, it is really more of this approach of looking at the revenue as a whole, the project's going to bring in, the expenses as a whole, and whatever that net amount is, that is what the CFD should capture. And so I think that going forward, you would see more services CFDs that would line up kind of more similar to, let's say, North Village than you would kind of the, the South Towns and the Cheyennes.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd have wanted to respond to what I was hearing a little bit from Vice Mayor Ritchie and from yourself. In the CFD policy, there is a Section 20, applicable projects. Staff, we did give some thought to which types of development should just not be required to go through, to join a CFD with, without a fiscal analysis. And so we chose things that are sort of the things that we thought were, that staff could make the call as appropriate, and so we actually aligned, I talked about affordable housing projects that are, should be exempt from CFD, that's one of them. We actually have infill development criteria. It's, it's a little narrow, it's actually based on some of our housing element sites that are difficult to develop, that are smaller. So the idea is, if you're on a site that's less than two and a half acres, planned for no more than 35 units, CFD should be taken off the table. But tonight, what we are hoping for, and we have also the downtown specific plan, we're recommending that as a policy, that downtown, that projects should not have to join CFDs for services, because we've heard loud and clear, the council wants to make downtown development happen and remove barriers. But tonight, if you have policy direction from us, particularly unified policy direction, that's always the best, on any other exemptions from CFDs that you'd like us to look into or get into further, we're happy to do that before we bring the final draft policy back to you.
Okay, I see that in Section 20, so I'll think about that, and I'll go, I'll move on to Councilmember Stockton.
So I will just reiterate, I agree with the comments that have been made about infill projects. I do think 35 units is probably a little low. I would say, you know, probably twice that, or somewhere in that area, I think, because times change, and we do want to focus on those infill locations and getting those developed with some of that affordable housing. The other thing that I think, you know, I mean, it just stands out, I mean, it's a, it's a good report, good presentation, but there's an extra comma in CFD 11, and there is a significant portion of town that pays no CFD. And so I, you know, while I recognize that there is a need for ongoing services, I mean, I love our public safety professionals that we have in town, and I want to make sure that they have the, the funding that they need to do their jobs, but how, how often are we utilizing infrastructure CFDs over service CFDs in percentage-wise for, for like some of these different projects? I mean, do we, how many of them do we have, roughly?
So as far as CFD for, city-form CFDs, Lagoon Valley is the only one that we currently have. There are, I think, are four projects that have utilized the skip program, and then one that's used bold.
Okay, and we're familiar with the, I know, I know we talked about the downtown and looking into that. So I guess my question is, is there a way to fix CFD 11 so that it is closer to what we see in CFD, you know, eight and 10 even, or 12? And then move some of that into an infrastructure CFD that has a timeline on it for, for that to happen? Is that something that council can do?
So once the CFDs formed, you can't change the rate unless those that live in CFD 11 basically voted to do so. Council can always charge less than the tax rate that was approved. And so when CFD 11 was formed, it was formed at a specific rate, and that gets escalated by CPI. Council can choose to charge kind of any rate under that, and currently in CFD 11 and 10, we are charging less than the maximum rate there. But you can't kind of switch that to make it infrastructure, go that route. As, as far as maybe like the bigger question of how do you bring the CFDs, the higher ones more in line with maybe the, the ones that are lower? Like, the whole idea with CFDs was that there are limitations on Prop 13 that kind of prevent cities from covering the costs of growth. If we're in a situation where, and we've talked about a sales tax measure as well, if we're in a situation where general fund revenues are substantially higher than expenses to where we have a surplus or an extra there, or extra amount there, you know, the council could decide that maybe some of that surplus goes towards kind of lowering the higher CFDs over time so that we're more reliant on the sales tax and property tax as opposed to kind of CFD revenue, growth, if that makes sense.
Okay. I would also say that I agree with the downtown being exempt. I do really, I think, I think the council's in agreement with that. I, I would prefer moving forward, if we, if we need a fire station, I think it should fall under the infrastructure CFD and not be in perpetuity. I, I don't want to hold developers hostage, or homeowners after that hostage. I love that you're utilizing some new methodology with Lagoon Valley. I know that they built a fire station, and so that should save on some of those costs, correct?
I'm not necessarily sure if it would save on the costs. I mean, what it does essentially is it gets that fire station built, I guess quicker because there's bond money for it to reimburse the developer, whereas if there wasn't bond funding, maybe they wouldn't be able to build that fire station, I guess.
Okay, so, so I would like to move forward with methodology like that. Like, if there are things that we need, I just, I just want it to be fair and easily, easy to understand. And I don't want to see us extorting homeowners in perpetuity forever on infrastructure if we have this other mechanism that has a timetable. Because one of the complaints, you know, that I have had in my district was, we poured a bunch of money in, you know, for a park, and then the money got absorbed and we didn't get our park. And I know that's different, but it's, for the taxpayers that are paying money and expecting something to be built, I think that if we utilize something with a timetable or triggers or something like that as well, we can give them a realistic expectation of when they plan to see whatever amenities it justifies those, in formulating the amount of money for that CFD. So I agree with both the comments from the mayor and from Councilmember Ritchie.
And before I go, Councilmember Silva, you're next. It raises the question that I think came from the public. Can a CFD be scaled based upon square foot? Because I see a comment from, from some, from the document here, and/or bedroom size or whatever. In other words, we're trying to incentivize, you know, size. Is there ways that CFDs play a part in that in a policy? I don't know.
Sure. So for infrastructure CFDs, you typically see it on a square footage basis, and that's kind of how the, the CFD tax for infrastructures are typically kind of levied, is on a square footage basis. There's nothing that prevents on the services side to levy on a square footage basis. It's just not typical. You don't really see it. It's something I could definitely talk to our special tax consultant on, kind of other cities that have used it or potentially what that looks like. The way that, and the reason why it's not, I think it's done on a square footage basis is that when you're going through that fiscal impact analysis, you're looking at kind of persons per house, like the number of people that live there, and that's sort of the, the metric on how much is it going to cost? Like, if the city's currently serving a population of 100,000, and we think the homes that are going to be built out there are going to be, let's say, three per house or four per house, so that's typically how the cost is done. And so...
So from what you're saying, a financial impact analysis in the future, modern thinking versus 20 years ago could, would take that into consideration. I just want to make sure we have a good policy that can capture that, because, for instance, a two-bedroom multifamily is very different than a 4,000-square-foot home, it's five, six-bedroom that has the higher occupancy. How, you know, how do we create something that is fair and equitable in a way that helps the builders give us what we want in maybe higher density? Workforce housing, that's something we're talking about. So just looking for how that might fit into a policy.
Yes, and we definitely could do that. I mean, as far as multifamily detached, attached, you definitely see that, that is common. What's not necessarily common is like, if it's a 4,000 square foot, this is the CFD services rate for it.
By square foot.
3,500 square foot, you don't see that, but you do see it by density, multifamilies.
That makes sense. Multifamily or single family based upon, not the size, but bedrooms tell a lot, right? I think a lot, so. Just trying to think creatively here. Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, I think, so a way I kind of look at this, and I don't, there's not going to be a perfect policy put in place, there's going to be, the market's constantly changing, you know, it's just part of things that are outside of our control. So the way I kind of approach all this is that staff have put extensive, extensive amount of effort into trying to do their best to consider all these, you know, different real issues, things that maybe haven't been really understood. Now we maybe understand them, and so we're trying, you know, try to update it accordingly. I think, I think as long as within the system, is one of the beautiful things about this country, is that when we put the best, the best policy in place, we support it as best we can, we try to do what's fair as possible, and where things go awry or wrong, or just don't make sense just because of the time and funding mechanisms that are, you know, that are there, that's when we can look back and use that data to say, you know, like, for example, as mentioned, you know, 35 to increase to 70. Like, for me, I just want to know what data is there to support it rather than just throwing out numbers. And I think, so as those things constantly change based on like what the cost, cost it is to build, what are, you know, what, what is the cost to our, our current residents? I will say most, you know, the biggest thing when I go door-to-door, meet random people, hey, how do you feel about your city? It's growing too fast, no more building, not one more house. Unless somebody's directly tied into benefiting from, where they feel that they're financially benefiting from more housing, they are not in support of more growth. And then it leads to a big conversation about how growth is actually necessary if we want to continue to enjoy the quality of life that we all enjoy here in the city of Vacaville. So it takes an extensive amount of public education to try to find that balance, to understand why we have to grow, the challenges that Prop 13 implement, and, and in some cases, the ongoing benefits of, of having CFDs. You know, so like, in that sense, like, if there is a sunset, this is a question for Ken, if there's a sunset on some of these, would, and from one lens, would that exacerbate the problems that many cities face that prompted them to put CFDs in place in the first place? So if there is sunsets on generating this revenue, so like, for example, you know, if all of a sudden the city's not generating, you know, five million from one of them, and we budgeted, we accounted it, we set our budget, three-year, five-year budget, and then all of a sudden, we got to do this hiring, we got to take this gamble, we bring all these folks in, and now all of a sudden, we drop whatever revenue that would cause, is that, is that only exacerbating the problem for the city at large, long-term? Or, or am I wrong in that?
Yes, that's why you don't see a sunset on services, is, you know, kind of to your point, we're currently running a... point, we're currently running a $9 million deficit in our general fund. If we were to sunset CFD 11, say we, we're not going to levy that tax anymore, then our deficit jumps to 14, 15 million. And so if you sunset a services CFD, the assumption is that services still can be provided, that we're not going to stop doing that. And so that cost would then just have to be absorbed by the general fund.
And then, the one, one thing I was thinking, how many, I don't know if anybody has this data, how many first-time home buyers are buying brand-new homes, not in Vacaville, but in other cities that, in other cities, versus a new, a first-time home buyer buying an older home that ideally is maybe more attainable for price?
I don't think we have data on that, but we took note of that question and we'll see what we can figure out.
Because I think part of the discussion is also, I mean, it seems like we're focused on first-time home buyers, you know, average income individuals. The, one of the challenges that we also have here is that we need better, that's why there should be a strong, excuse me, and a continued, a continued strong emphasis on economic development and making sure that we retain those good businesses that are, that are in town, whatever sector it may be. Because it just seems as if, so, so part of the, part of the strategy I would think for some folks is to be able to continue to move up. So one of the advantages of having different, you know, different living dwellings or whatnot is if someone has to, can only afford a fixer-upper home, that's where they start, that's where they start. It's not where you finish unless you want to. But just having the, when we talk about diverse housing options and certain quality of living, I've also known residents who want to have a more challenging opportunity for people to buy homes because that's from their mindset of how they can maintain a quality of life for that particular neighborhood that they're investing in. And I think, you know, every city has that dynamic and is laid out that way, just if you start breaking down the demographics in every particular city. So for me, my, really my suggestion is we roll what you all put all this effort into and then as things come up, as the market goes, as, as all these things challenge out, even outside of our control, I think that's where we, we look at to see where we need to modify how we move forward to find those win-wins rather than giving away our win and setting up the future up to be in a worse situation.
Before I go to council member Stockton, I simply would push back a little bit. I agree with you 100%. If you can't afford it, you shouldn't buy it. When we all started, we started, we should start with a fixer-upper. We should not be living beyond our means and maybe that's a generational thing. I'd never want to look at this as that our win is that the city's our win. The revenue should be for providing services. We absolutely have to do this, I know this. The concern though is the idea that we would just come back and fix something. Okay, it's been 20 years and the only thing this council and this city ever does is say, join CFD 11 and we annex, join CFD 10 and we keep adding and adding and adding. This is a great opportunity, to your point and to all of us, to make sure we have a good policy. I believe that while there was good intention 20 years ago, we certainly, I do believe, we've learned a lot about what we would do differently, clearly, because part of what needs to go into a document that forms the CFD is what that is going to be spent for. And so here's a hypothetical. We continue to grow and we need to build Station 77. Fire department would love to hear that, right? We need another fire station because we're growing, it should be good. If it's to support 50% residential and 50%, let's say areas where it's industrial, there is a formula, I think it's in the policy, it's 100% residential, 50% employees. So using the fact that I believe that there's good language in the policies that are coming forward, I appreciate that. But with that, would, would we be building a building such as a fire station and put it into a service CFD today if that were what was needed in a growth area? Or would we put that in infrastructure? Because we build a building at some point as a resident, you pay it off in 30 years. But what we're telling people is, is if you buy a house, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if South Town is a service CFD, but it's also with no bonds and it's paying in perpetuity with an increase, we're asking people who live there to pay a fee to cover a building that should someday be paid off? That's not right. That's, that's the history lesson that we've learned. I just want to make sure in the future, we're not doing that.
Yes, that's correct. I mean, to use your example, if we were building a new fire station under this policy and developer approached us and said that, you know, for this fire station, they're looking at using the infrastructure financing and that was a $10 million fire station, we would issue bonds and then similarly like your own mortgage, we would be paying through that CFD for that fire station for the next 30 years. The homeowners in that CFD would pay for that over the 30 years. When the bonds are paid off, that portion of their CFD.
The infrastructure portion would be paid off. The service would continue.
Correct.
That's my point. That's right. Thanks. Council member Stockton?
That was a great question, Mr. Mayor. How many, how many homes or units, whatever metric you want to use, are actually in CFD And I'm curious to know what the percentage is of homes in CFD 11 in both comparison, you know, maybe percentage-wise to the other amount of units in CFDs and as well as in relation to the entire city?
Yeah, so in CFD 11, it's about 2,993 units. In CFD 1, we have 2,200. Not sure if you want me to just keep going down the list?
No, I mean, you're, I think you're, I think what you're doing is you're, I think we have, you know, roughly 3,000 homes that are paying like an absurd amount of money every year in comparison to the impact that they have. And so, I mean, what I would like the council to potentially consider is at least freezing the COLA for them while the other ones catch up or trying to find some way to mitigate the, because if you, if you keep adding a 3% COLA on top of that exorbitant amount, like it's just going to go up higher and higher when, when they're such a small percentage of the additional services that we, that we need here in Vacaville. So I just, I would like the council to consider a way to fix that because I just don't think that it's right.
Can I just respond to that real quick? So for CFD 10 and 11, we haven't been applying the CPI for, I could double check and get back to you, but I think it's like 2020, 2021 was the last time.
And I'm glad to hear that because it's already such a, like when you look at it, it's in comparison, it's significant.
Council member, council member Richie, your light's on. I know that council member Wiley, you haven't spoken yet, so. Go ahead, council member Richie.
Oh, please go.
Okay. Council member Wiley?
Thanks for the information. Since we're talking about CFD 11 and the rate that they pay and things, so on that is all of, there's quite a bit of South Town still being built and all the, all the things that are going in there are in CFD 11. That encompasses up to the boundaries of what is still being built, is that correct?
That is correct, although we are getting questions now with some newer developments about whether or not it's fair to have them join CFD 11 or whether they'll be able to avail themselves of the city's new fiscal impact analysis policy and perhaps take another look at that.
All right. And so areas that just built like about 200 units that are for rent, so does, did the developer pay for each individual unit and then they pass that on in the rent? Or how, how do they get this? That's called Sierra Vista.
They were required to join the CFD.
Okay.
And how they, how they pay for that is kind of up to them, but I'm imagining it's passed along in the form of rent.
So that, so that's a good point, is that CFDs on multifamily end up increasing rents significantly?
They, they can, and I guess I'll hearken back to another project I've been working on with some folks from the city team. The developers or the owners can't rent units for more than the market will bear, so there's probably a little bit of tension between passing on that cost, but ultimately also having a rent that is someone, something that someone is willing to pay.
All right. And then also, I mean, the CFDs are just one of the many items on the, on the, you know, the property tax and the park and the school and everything else. It, it does seem like the new development paying an exorbitant amount because some of the older homes don't even pay the, for the lighting and landscaping. And so it's another inequity that we have and we've tried to address, but it's just really hard to, you know, when you have to put it to a vote, the people who don't pay are going to say, no, we don't want to pay. And then the people that are paying have to bear an additional burden. So when we talk about CFDs, I just don't want to lose track of, that's only one of some of the many things that are on the property tax. And then the other thing with, we keep talking about fire stations, fire stations, but we have had several things that have come before the council about the huge cost of fire trucks and all those things. So I do feel like it is fair for the residents to bear a cost for fire, it's not just building a station, it is also some of the equipment when we have to pay $300,000 for a truck. So I just want to throw in fire trucks with the fire stations. So, and I have long felt that the CD, CFDs are very different, you know, so, so different. And I would like to find a way to try to minimize the impact to just the new owners. And I also understand from, that there is a reason that you would want to sunset some things, but, so those are my feelings. I'm really glad we're addressing this because I don't want to just go in the same direction of, oh, add a CFD, add a CFD, because I feel like that's not the best way to fund new development.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Council member Richie?
So my second, second time, I was a little quick, I really appreciate the mayor's comments and the air bullets. I made some notes, maybe we should look at something, you said 35 times two, so maybe I got a number like either 100 or 80 units for infill. We need to find a number to do that, say 180 units or less exempt. I want to really look at infill, as long as police and fire can say it's not going to, it's not going to negatively affect them if there is a small infill development and they're already serving the community, is that having a infill and exempt, would that cause a, a negative impact to police and fire and services? If not, I think this is a great map. I think the mayor talked about, there's a ramp in a period in Vacaville around this 2006 when a lot of CFDs were made. It's funny, I just watched a thing today, an informational thing. They're talking about the next bubble. There's, there's, there's everything in the bubble happening right now, all three sectors. And they talked about 2006, the average house is $280,000, by the time the bubble happens, like 330. The 1% tax rate is a lot different for those homes. The average house is almost 600,000 now. So they're 1%, and it's funny, there it is, right there. So when you take that 1% Prop 13 tax rate, a house paying $600,000 a year, it gets divided into like thirds, right? County, city, and a little bit of the school district. We don't get all of that pie, but a lower CFD with a tax rate anywhere above 500,000 is going to offset that, that, that cost dramatically. It's going to allow for someone who's going to live in an apartment, that we, we have a big deficit, EDC was talking about, the youth that are getting out of college, coming back to the community, they can't afford it. We need to make it possible for them to come back to Vacaville, work in Vacaville and not spend every last dollar on rent to be able to save, to be able to move from their renting to ownership. It, it's a big, it's a big task. I always use analogy when I do presentations, it's a three-legged stool. One leg is income, the other leg is, is a down payment, the third leg is, is closing costs. If we can help them with the down payment with the grant funds and bond funds, but the problem is they're in California, it's hard to save. So they need help. If we can provide housing and both ownership and renting that lowers the cost and allow them to come back to the community, create a workforce that's young and create ownership through, they have to be able to save the money. If they can't save because everything's so darn expensive, we're just creating a vicious cycle. So I, I think taking that Prop 13 tax rate is going to offset, somebody's house is paying $600,000 a year, they pay more than that a month. And, I mean, we can bring affordable housing, 600,000 is below the loan limit for VA in Solana County. Like that's possible. That is quote-unquote affordable and that's a lot of money. I mean, that Prop 13 divided by three, that portion is still greater than some of the CFDs we're getting in some neighborhoods. So I just really want to look at eliminating infill, maybe 80 units or less eliminating. And if someone's going to, and there is, I think there is a rule in statute that you can have a CFD and a CFD. If they're building a certain amount of units in a development that are, say, 500 square feet or less, you could charge those a less CFD inside a development. Is that the case?
Yeah, I know, I think CFD exemptions for like welfare exemptions and things of that nature and then you could definitely kind of charge less based off the square footage.
Yes, if there's a development, if they're offering, like I want executive housing down, down to first-time home buyers, but if they're building something in a massive scale, maybe that CFD at a lower level for those houses would create that opportunity. If you, if you're buying a $500,000 per house, the cost, cost would be the boss. I mean, you got to pay, but give the people the opportunity to get in and have, make a rational payment. So that, that's it.
I think you've got a lot of good feedback tonight. Finally, I know this will come back in a future discussion for adoption because these are the two guiding principles. It's, you know, how do we do the, the financial analysis? And I think that that, you know, Ken, I've had many conversations over the years with you on that because how do you determine, what do you need in services? It's, it's not an easy number to figure out. The goal though is to make sure that our policies really do align with, how can we accomplish that which can fairly represent what it takes to do? Because as time passes, five, 10, 20 years passes, to get a first-time buyer into a, into a fixer-upper home or new to them requires somebody to move elsewhere. And so the constant need for development and we don't build is going to require that. I appreciate the, you know, the 1.8 max as far as a tax rate versus, I think some cities still can use the 2%. But I, I also will, in, in defense of where staff's position will work on this, is understanding it's what the market will bear for people. And so the document, the formation document has got to pass the standard of today and not 20 years ago, right? If we're, if, if there were CFDs in the past that included a building, it is what it is, but let's make sure we don't do that again. Because two CFDs formed within, you know, 24 months of each other, one needs a fire station moved, the other doesn't, but both of them are served by the same fire station. The formation behind it doesn't pass the logic test. And so my hope is today, because we don't want to come back a year or two or five years and go, we had the opportunity to fix something and now, now's the time. That's, that's the key. I will say though, as far as policy, 20, I don't want to go too big, so I'm going to say, you know, maybe less than 80, you know, 75, maybe 75. We're looking for incentives and for developers to build and we want some of these infill projects to happen, the market rates can be what they can bear, but ultimately if they don't pencil, then they don't get built and we have too many projects that don't get built. And so ultimately what we do know is, is the red line on this slide says it all. As the home prices go up, this is something we've heard from developers for the last several years, when they're trying to make the financial impact case, and I know, Ken, you're very familiar with this, at some point, we look at that, we say, compared to what other homes are paying, at some point, it, there's a great, there's too great of a burden on these homes. And so at some point, they won't be new anymore. So I, I think you have the comments you need. Look forward to hearing back. I see council member Fremell?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I kept reading in here a lot about fiscal impact analysis and that's something that kind of needs to be looked at for every project that comes through, whether it's multifamily fill-in or it's a new development going on east of Leisure Town or the ones that have currently happened. And I've read through, I mean, a lot of information that staff has provided, there's just, it's, I'm, I've drowned in information. There's so much information and so many choices and I don't mean that I, like, but it's, I'm looking for something that's fair also. I mean, I think about. I mean, I think about, I'll give, I'll give you an example. I picked up my son from the George Duke Center last night playing basketball, and he got one game in, because there's so many kids there, that there's not, there's not enough basketball courts. We got the same thing with soccer fields. We've got kids and families that are leaving outside of this city every single weekend and all week long, because we don't have the facilities to facilitate our, our, our own community. I also don't know that that, I don't think that's the responsibility of the builders to do that, but also, I think that there's, that some of that is the responsibility of the builders, but not shoved all in at one time on the builders as we're coming up with new CFDs and trying to figure out how to negotiate. I'll, I'll tell, I live in a 40-year-old house, and I don't pay any CFDs at all. And I know that probably the house that I live in costs the city money out of its general fund, you know, and I, is that fair? I don't know, but I, you know, if I was going to be buying a house today, I'd be looking in the older part of town, not where there's CFDs. I mean, just being, being realistic. But I don't know that, yeah, I mean, there's so much good information, and, you know, I know that we can go up and we can tour Roseville and see how they're doing things, and how Elk Grove is doing things, and some of these communities have done a really good job. Folsom, you know, some of these communities have done a really good job, you know, and managing it. I don't know that they turned on the, the valve and forced all that water down at one time over one development. I think it's something. And the other thing that I'm just curious about is, you know, where does AI play a part into any of these future decisions for us, as far as for, how do you, how do you, how do you throw all those numbers into the mix to figure out what is fair and equitable for the whole community? Because if I was told that I, I needed to pay some more on my taxes in my community to get some new ball fields, to get some new, but we, we also have to be looking at different ways to raise money. It can't just be all on the backs of the new people that are coming in, trying to bite off a piece of the American pie and have their dream home. So, I mean, I'm thinking about all, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, like, a big Gray Wolf Center that, you know, and, and soccer fields, that we've got 20 of those, and 20 more baseball fields, and a Gray Wolf Center, and all of our hotels are full, and other place, other ways that we can generate more income in our city, you know. So now I'm just getting off into dreamland a little bit, I'm sorry about that, but there, there's got to be other ways to raise money, instead of just on the backs of all of the new people coming in, off the backs of the development community, and I'm not saying it's on their backs, but I, I just, I don't want to see us go with a maximum, you know, or anything close to that, you know. I, I, I heard what everybody had to say tonight, and I'm still confused, you know, I'm still thinking about it, I'm still reading through this stuff regularly, just trying to figure it out. It's a lot of information, everything that's been presented. Mr. McLean, you, you've done a great job presenting a lot of information to us through some of these meetings that we've had, and making me understand what the real need is for our community, or do we just put a Band-Aid on it and get a spy for a little while, you know, so anyways, I'll stop there. I'll stop there.
Councilmember Sibley?
Yeah, just a couple last comments for council and the community. Like, a lot of those cities that we see, you know, like was mentioned, Roseville, Folsom, another one that comes up in the past, Elk Grove, we've had comparisons, we've seen, we've been presented with data on how they have that, those nice amenities are part of a lot of these practices that we've been discussing and, and looking at for these past five years that I've, I've been on council. So a, a lot of that information is out there, and I believe that's what staff is using, along with where we stand within our own more direct region, to come up with that. And on top of that, a lot of these, a lot of developers who are opposed to this, they are also developing in those other communities as well. So I think, like, all of that needs to be taken into account when we receive information, we start throwing out different, A, we think we should be this, or this, or that, like, all of that, you know, we've talked about making data-driven decisions, we should be using data to show for that, and that data is, is out there, and that's part of the years of analysis that staff has been doing. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Hopefully you've got enough feedback to, we'll look forward when you come back to see how we can finalize these two policies, so thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our last item.
Our last item is a resolution approving the employment agreement for your new city attorney incoming. And Director Jessica Bowes will be giving the presentation.
I'm here tonight to present a contract for our new city attorney. We're doing this tonight because our current city attorney, Ms. Stewart, has announced her retirement effective December 20th. Congratulations. And we're looking for the council to approve the appointment of Andrea Borba to the, to the position of city attorney, and to approve the related employment agreement, and provide authorization to the city, to the mayor, to execute that agreement. Again, Melinda's retiring December 20th, and the city council, as you know, interviewed Ms. Borba for this position. Some background on Ms. Borba, she has been an assistant city attorney here at the City of Vacaville since 2019. She was originally hired in 2016 as a deputy city attorney. She has over 25 years of combined experience, not just from her time here at the city, but prior to us, she was a senior counsel for the California Department of Corrections. She's also served in this, as an associate attorney for private sector, private and public agencies across California. She holds a Juris Doctorate and a BA in History. Some highlights of the city attorney employment agreement that we're presenting tonight, it's a five-year term, beginning on December 20th. The annual starting base salary will be $294,498.40. The city will provide a 9% city contribution to deferred compensation, a monthly auto allowance of $400, and the city will write health insurance benefits and leave accruals consistent with those of other executives in the city. There is no additional fiscal impact for this current fiscal year. As a matter of fact, there's about a $32,000 savings to the, to the, to the budget, and the estimated annual cost, including benefits, is around $371,000. The budget for this is already within the city attorney's budget for the fiscal year. This supports our goal number four, maintain effective and efficient services, and by simple motion, we ask that you adopt subject resolution and provide authorization to the mayor to execute the agreement.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you for that. I don't see any questions from the council, I'll open up the public for any comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, the council, and first of all, I'll say, Melinda, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been a long time, I was on staff with your entire team, but I've seen you step into that role, and even in that transition and succession, and so you'll be missed, but we do love having our internal legal team that's, that's growing, and it's growing because of the work that you've done to, to bring it beyond just three attorneys, because that was never enough, and you knew it, and so thank you for that. I am certainly appreciative of Andrea Borba, I've worked with Andrea over the years when I was the chief of police, a very highly competent, not only attorney, but team player within the city, but with public and private experience, and someone that I have known to be very clear and very thoughtful, and very understanding of, you know, how to move us into the future. From here, we are moving from one attorney internally, and so really looking forward to this, and so I'm looking forward to a motion on this council to adopt this, this agreement, so that we can transition into your employment starting after December 20th.
Do you approve?
We have a motion.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, thank you very much for accepting this. And as what we've always said, for anyone who's achieved department head status or above, be careful what you wish for. We've all been there, I've been there too, so, but we really do welcome you and appreciate all the work you've done thus far and where you're going to take us, so thank you very much.
Just one comment.
Comment, yes?
Sorry, I, I want to prove, like, it's just, something that you said has sparked, like, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, what do you call it, girl dad? Like, I mean, I look down, and it's, it was a loss to me, like, we have an all-woman table down there, we have assistant city manager's a female, and now we're appointing a new, and then you're a head, we have, you're a head, we, we have a lot, I mean, it's a loss to me, like, as I look around, like, it's, that's, that's a really powerful thing, for women to see other women in positions of power, and know they, they can get there. You know, my, my daughter, my daughter still wants to be a police officer, and so I'm going to embrace it, but, I mean, but-
Be a fireman.
Yeah. But, I mean, but it, it just, it's totally off the subject, but I, as I look down on the bench, we have a new city manager, like, that's, that's powerful, and so, like, I mean, I, I just, is it, is it relevant? No, but, I mean, being a guy that, I mean, it is, me, that's, people see that as opportunity, like, wow, I can maybe be there, I can do that, so, that's it.
Well, thank you, and, and we're certainly looking forward to it. It just means your, your phone is 24/7, even when you're on vacation, you know that, but I have had the, the privilege to have watched your work over all these years, and obviously the focus of the department that I was in, but you, you certainly will bring that next level to take us to that, that next place that we're looking to go to, so thank you, Melinda, and thank you, Andrea, you both have served well. One, you're going to understand what Chapter Two looks like soon, and it's, it's actually nice, sometimes you end up doing something like this, but, but anyway, be careful what you, what you say yes to, but thank you very much, and so with that, we will go ahead and, we do have two items left in closed session, the continuation of the agenda item, and that's items B and C of closed session. There will not be anything to report out tonight, so with that, we will stand adjourned. Good night, Vacaville. Did I just hear?